Let's call the meeting to order and rise for the pledge. Our flag is back here tonight. I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, every being, and justice for all.
Thank you. It's good to see everybody here tonight. Valerie draws a crowd. First up, tonight, we just have a little bit of business to deal with. Debbie Teeman from the Recorder's Office has an affidavit to rest to sign to allow her money to be spent from the perpetuation fund.
Copy for everybody else if they leave this seat.
That's fine.
Do you want to explain to them what this is and why we do this?
Sure, you can.
Okay. Each year, the auditor is required by state law or Indiana code to allow the council to use certain funds from our Recorder's Perpetuation Fund to fund the salary that we've agreed to pay for out of our Recorder's Fund. So I had to redo these, so probably the copy you have before is not right. But since the budget had been passed, those figures changed a little bit. So you've got the current figures now. So it will pay for Kieran Need, Joy Hobson, and our two part-time clerks their salaries. And also the window that we talked about constructing in front of our office. And I allowed a little bit more money than what the quote was, the highest quote was. So with all that totaled, it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I'm submitting that affidavit to you so that you can create an ordinance.
This is for 2024. Did we do this last year?
Um, I found last year's and it says that she submitted it to the council.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't remember either.
It's hard to remember. Been that long. So do I need to sign this?
No.
You just need to.
No.
Okay.
To address Tony's point, I had the same questions that Tony had. I didn't recall preparing an ordinance. I thought maybe the state might have provided maybe a template or predecessor. Maybe not. I think we can do an ordinance for the end of the year that ratifies those expenditures and the 2023 statute does require that this be done every year. If it's going to be done, I think the first thing you've got to remember, the Records Perpetuation Fund is a dedicated fund from identified revenues that you collect through the reporting process. So before you can take a dedicated fund like that and use it for a purpose other than for which it's been dedicated, it requires oversight by, in this case, the fiscal body, the county council. So it's a two-step process. The affidavit that the recorder provides you, you have. It has findings to the effect that she's certifying that there's adequate funds in her Record Perpetuation Fund to meet the reasonably expected needs that will be chargeable to that fund in 2024. And she's identified office expenses, which is what she can use, that can be refunded or can be funded with that Records Perpetuation Fund if council approves. It can only be used in 2024, and it cannot be used in an amount greater than that which has been, will have been authorized in the ordinance. So that's kind of the context. It's learning experience from me because I bet this has been done before. We might not have had an ordinance to follow up with the affidavit, but I'm confident we probably had the affidavit.
Yeah, we had the affidavit.
So we'll make sure we have both parts to it this year.
So tonight, obviously, entertain a motion to allow Debbie to sign the affidavit and make that contingent on our attorney preparing the ordinance that we will sign at our first December meeting.
December meeting.
Yep, okay.
Still moved.
Sure.
Motion in five seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. Thank you, Debbie. We appreciate what you've done to help budget for next year.
There's also some year-end money that we need to address. And I had submitted that to Bobby and to the auditor.
Okay.
It's just a transfer of funds. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes, I do see that from the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. Okay, we have a transfer of sixty thousand from Fund 1160, forty thousand from Fund 217, transferring to Fund 1189, the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund. So we just need a motion to make that transfer of those funds.
So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. All right, that motion passes. We'll get this signed. Got everything for you, Debbie. Thank you so much for coming.
Sure, thank you.
We have a full house tonight, and I just want to tell everyone before we get started that our meetings are public meetings, not public hearings. The public won't be given time to speak for or against anything. We're here for information tonight to hear the presentation. So with that being said, Valerie Schaefer, we'll turn it over to you.
Good evening.
Hello.
It's been a busy day. This is my third time being on television today. The viewers are going to be sick of me. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about a project that we're calling Loop 601. The name is subject to change. However, we wanted a title that we really felt built upon the progress that's been happening downtown. Obviously, the loop being a significant part of downtown development that runs right in front of the existing Elder Bearman property. So you all received a memo a couple of weeks ago from Mayor Dave Snow. As you can see, the mayor is not here this evening. That memo was a document that really demonstrated his passion and support of this project and the work that we've been doing for the past two years to bring this to this point this evening. However, with the pending change in administration, I would like to invite Ron Oller up here. Even though the mayor is changing, the city's commitment to this project is not. So I would like Mayor-elect Ron Oller to briefly speak to that.
Thanks, Valerie. This is only my second time on television today. Last week, so it's been an interesting couple of weeks. Anyways, I want you to know that the city administration, my administration, fully supports this project. And I'll tell you a little about the history of it, and you'll get some more of that later. But several years ago, with Ken Pousled leading when he was still elected official, we purchased the old Elder Bearman building for a reason because some downtown properties had fallen into out-of-state and even out-of-country investors who've done nothing with them. So we had this plan. The first developer came in, had this great plan of commercial space on the ground floor and then some apartments on the top floor. And you have a picture of the old building, which is right here. That's my help call. So we thought that was a good plan, and then it didn't pan out for a lot of reasons, and Valerie, go into that. But if you don't know the history of this building, right on the corner of that, we had that explosion in 1968. And when the city was trying to get Elder Bearman, a very successful Dayton company, huge department stores, to come to Richmond, they said they would come if the city would build them an explosion-proof building, so that's what we got. Poured concrete walls, poured concrete roof, a whole lot of concrete. So the developers, when they looked at it, realized, you know, this wasn't built to have twenty or thirty kitchens. It was built to have four restrooms. So the whole building is wrong for anything other than retail. And it's unfortunate that big-box retail is not coming back to downtowns, as much as I wish it would. I wish for a lot of things. So a couple of months ago, we rezoned or put the three parcels into one special district. And I'll tell you why it's important. When the city built the building, we owned the building, we maintained the building. Elder Bearman leased it from the city. The city kept those two parking lots. It's their property. When Bon Ton Stores bought Elder Bearman and some other stores years ago, Bon Ton did lease buildings. They wanted to buy the buildings. So they bought the building from the city. City kept the two parking lots. City was thinking ahead. So years later, when Bon Ton went bankrupt, the city and the county was able to purchase it and maintain it. We've been holding on to it, and she'll tell you more about that in a bit. So we thought we had some plans. So after a couple of different developers, this next developer came along, and this is pretty awesome. This will change trajectory of our downtown. This investment is the first. I'm theorizing, in my first four years of my administration as mayor, this is the first of what will be probably a hundred million dollars investments in our downtown. And this is a third of it, just the very first thing. And the reason you're hearing this tonight, we're getting really close to closing on this, and a lot of things needs to happen. And there's some people in the community who have been opposed to this, and some of them aren't wrong. The previous administration, I can say that now, but they never really developed a comprehensive plan for downtown. Now, there's some scattered plans, but their argument was, why do this on a corner where we don't have a downtown plan? Well, I don't disagree with that. We need a full comprehensive plan. But if we're just a couple of weeks from closing on this, and there's two local banks that want this, we've got to move forward. We've got to do this. We don't want to let this one get away. We have a real excellent opportunity here, as you'll see in a minute. Because once this happens, and when I spoke to the EDC last week and I met the developer Darren over here, I said, you know, it's going to take you two or three years to build this. We're going to start some other projects downtown next year. So the people that think that downtown's not doing anything, we're going to start some other downtown projects next year. And we're going to have a lot of other projects done before this is even done, before the first tenant moves in because this will take a couple of years. So I'm excited about this. So I just want you to know that the administration that starts January 2nd legally is fully 100% in support of this. And I think, I hope we have your blessing tonight to move forward. I really appreciate that. Appreciate everybody coming out, appreciate your time, and hope you enjoy this presentation. This is pretty cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so to further explain a little bit of history beyond what Mayor Oller has said, Ken Pousled led a task force back in 2018 when we learned that the Bon Ton Stores were going bankrupt. And as Ron said, we wanted to take control of the fate of this property. And so the plan was, an agreement among that task force, is that we would move forward with the acquisition of the property. And if we did not find a viable redevelopment opportunity, we would tear it down in about three years. We're five years holding ownership of this property and maintaining it. And so we've been working diligently for two years to actually build the scope of this project because there's many layers to the financial contributions, which we'll discuss later. But we didn't find a developer, but it's not for lack of trying, to redevelop the existing structure. Shortly after we acquired the property, we engaged RQAW, an architectural firm, to do some feasibility studies for us and some renderings of what it could be to give us some really good marketing collateral to go out and sell this property to potential developers. And unfortunately, that did not result in any viable opportunities for us. This is just a rendering of some potential utilization of the existing structure with mixed-use commercial and institutional space on the ground floor. And then the thought was to have some apartment units on the second floor. This is a drawing of what the exterior could be revised to look like. However, this building envelope alone would have cost about 7.3 million dollars five years ago. So imagine what that would cost today. So once we decided that we were not getting any traction with redevelopment of the property, we then shifted to the opportunity to think about demolition of the structure and use the pad as a site to promote for a brand-new development. And that's when we found Flaherty &amp; Collins, who ironically, we were talking to about a different site for apartment development. But once he learned about this opportunity, he was very excited and very engaged in wanting to do an urban project here in downtown Richmond. So now I'll invite Darren up to talk a little bit about the history of Flaherty &amp; Collins as a company so you can get to know them a little bit better, and then talk about some example projects that they've completed across the state of Indiana and the country. Darren?
Thank you, Valerie. My name is Darren Kettner. I'm with Flaherty &amp; Collins. We'd be the developer of the project. We're based in Indianapolis. We've been in business 30-plus years. We're kind of narrowly focused on just doing multifamily apartment development. You know, when we first started, we probably did what you typically would think of as apartments with an apartment complex that was probably on a corn or soybean field that previously was there. But we have, you know, the last 15 years really shifted to do an urban infill development, apartments with a little bit or some amount of first-floor commercial use. Typically, there's some structured parking here. That parking is already provided, which quite frankly makes this project still extremely difficult to pull off, but it gives it a fighting chance. Everything we do is public-private partnerships, working with communities to deliver a project and a product that the market by itself, you know, wouldn't produce. We focus very high-end product, a lot of amenities that we'll get into. And, you know, the only thing that our project will have in common with those typical apartment complexes I referenced earlier is that people pay by the month the rent. It's really intended to be a resort feel, very communal, lots of places to hang out and lounge, very active lifestyle. So it's very different than what most of us, and even me, before, you know, I started in this field when I thought of apartments and what I grew up with, with apartments. So anyhow, that's what we do. Like I said, we've been in business 30-plus years. We have about 500 employees. We have developed all across the Midwest, but our, you know, focus or majority of our work has been in Indiana. No surprise. And Ohio is probably second. We've done, you know, we have the highest rent property in Indianapolis, Cincinnati, one of them in Columbus and one of them in Cleveland. But probably what we are doing more of are places like Kokomo, Report, Elkhart, Lawrenceburg, Columbus, Indiana, and hopefully Richmond. So what we have found is it's not just a big-city-type product. Everyone, there's demand for this sort of product in all communities. People who want to live close to where they can walk to get something to eat or get coffee or to see a show or a festival or, you know, a park, you name it. And typically, you know, our demographics are pretty much from two different categories. Probably 60 to 70% are young professionals, no kids. It's not typically something families with kids are looking for at that stage. But we're also, about 30, 40% are empty nesters. And when I started doing this, you know, eight, nine years ago, that was probably a 90-10 split. But a growing number of empty nesters are saying, I can sell my house, maybe pull some money out of it, but at least I don't have to clean a house and do the yard work anymore. And they're wanting to, those same traits of being able to walk down the street, get something to eat or go to a park is becoming prevalent in that demographic as well. So we'll go through here, and Valerie, you may have to show me how to, same as today.
Yeah, just for that.
Okay. So this is a property, this is access, this is in downtown Indianapolis. But kind of similar feel, you know, four-story product. Here, it's four over one, so it's like five. What we're proposing here would be four stories total. But this had now a Kroger grocery store. It was initially a Marsh grocery store. But when they went bankrupt, Kroger bought them out of it, and it was the first new grocery development in downtown Indianapolis in a few decades. This is the depot at Nickel Plate in Fishers. Yeah, this, Fishers has had a lot of development of late. This was the first major project that they had. It was on their old parking lot to their municipal building. I think it was Town Hall at the time. Now it'd be City Hall. But since this, there's been hundreds of other apartments delivered in the area as well as a brand-new office building. And going a little further east, there's been Ikea and a Topgolf, which we take credit for, maybe undeservingly. But this was really the first one that kickstarted it and led to, you know, Fishers being what it is today from a development and entertainment standpoint. Whiskey River, and this is in Lawrenceburg, very similar to what we're proposing here. They're both going to be 150 units. Probably the most successful project in our portfolio as far as exceeding expectations. But I think it goes to show you that if you build something like this, there is pent-up demand for it. Lawrenceburg, I think, has less than 10,000 people. I think it's like 8,000 or 9,000. And we filled this up in less than six months. Typically, it's a year. I have a project in Columbus, Ohio, it's probably going to take two years to get filled up. But in Lawrenceburg, this was the fastest property destabilization, like I said, that we have in our, you know, 30 to 40 property portfolio. But it was also one of them that on the front end, probably people had the most questions. I had someone I went to college with who is in real estate in the Lawrenceburg area who said, yeah, I'd do maybe 20, 25 units. I'd be comfortable with that. No way 150. And, you know, it's, but this is probably, though, the best illustration of there is demand for this product. And it's people of, you know, those, you know, young people, older people, people from Lawrenceburg, people new to the area, people come from northern Kentucky and Ohio that gravitate to this. So it's been a success, and I'm extremely confident something in Richmond will be as well. All right, Valerie, stop moving. I'm going to get here.
It got stopped marrying. Might have lost Wi-Fi again. They had to restart the router before the meeting.
If you'll trust me, I'll go without the images.
They have copies of the presentation.
So it's other properties, and I won't bore you with all of them. We have one in Brownsburg that, if you're familiar with Brownsburg at all, it's about 30 minutes from Indianapolis to the northwest. And it's downtown. Up until about five years ago was their Town Hall. And then one corner, a CVS, the other corner, Walgreens. And so they selected us to do a project there that was 200 apartments and a little bit, 7,500 square feet of commercial space. That has also been a success. And the reason I say it's been a success is because we're finishing up the second phase right next to it that will be completed here in a couple of months. So again, it's, yeah, there were some questions, you know, eight years ago, whether, you know, luxury apartments in Brownsburg, but it's been a hit. Oh, yeah. So kind of speaking of similar demographics, where our residents come from fall into three almost equal plots. One is, in this case, would be people who already live in Richmond and decide this is the place they would want to move to. Another third is people already in the area, in the community, but outside of Richmond. Who live in the area but outside of Richmond, that's a third. And then another third would be brand-new to the entire, coming from out of the area, bringing, you know, their incomes and their spending to Richmond. So we track that amongst all our properties, and it's uncanny how similar that, those numbers are from property to property. So I mentioned, this isn't your typical apartment complex that a lot of us are used to seeing. So we'll have, you know, a clubroom with billiards and ping pong, whatever games and activities. Decide to go in there, it varies by property. Bikes are big. A lot of our residents like the bike, and I know there's trails here that they connect to, so that'll be big. So we have not only a bike storage area, a lot of times we'll also have a bike repair area where they can work on their bike as they need. A business center, which has become more critical since COVID. We always had a lot of residents who would work from home, whether they be in sales and, you know, their home office would be their apartment. But since COVID, that number has increased materially. So one of the big things that our residents have asked for more than in years past is separate conference rooms so they can work out of in a day if they have their boss in and they want to sit in there and have some privacy, they can. We also have what we call the co-working space, which is really just a bunch of chairs and couches, but people can come with their laptops and they lounge, make sure plug-in space is prevalent. So we, you know, we do cater, especially nowadays, to those who will be working from home at least on occasion. Fitness center, we'll have all the fitness equipment you can need, as well as group fitness. And, you know, the television that we'll be able to access, all kinds of different workout programs. A lot of people, there's not a need to join a gym when you live on our property because you'll have everything you need. Some people still choose to, and that's fine. But that'll be, that's something that's important to people. The other thing, I said, a lot of people are residents or into biking or have bikes, probably even more so they have pets. I mentioned, there's not a lot of children in properties like this, but there's a lot of pets. And we'll have a pet wash and a pet spa for our residents to use and a dog run area, a little fenced-in area where you can let your dog run. So that's another key element here. And outdoor amenities, everywhere we go, we put a pool in, even in Minneapolis or Cleveland. We put pools in that don't get a lot of use because people like to hang out by a pool even if it's too cold to get in. So there'll be a pool and an aqua lounge area here as well. Couple places we put in pickleball. That seems to be a growing, or it is a growing sport. It seems to be popular in this community, so we've added that as late. Again, it's trying to appeal to people who can live anywhere, they have means. They're renters by choice, not because they have to, and want them to enjoy their time and be drawn to the property. This next one for me, it's just a list of some of the similar projects we've done. I think there's probably 20-some on here. Just gives you project costs and our roles. Flaherty &amp; Collins, obviously, we're always the developer on the front end. We typically also construct our own projects, especially if it's in Indiana. You start venturing further away from there. We'll hire a local GC who has got a little more market and subcontractor knowledge there. We also manage all of our properties. So Flaherty &amp; Collins will manage the property. The city and the community will always have Flaherty &amp; Collins people onsite. If issues pop up or opportunities, you know, we'll still be here in that role. And I'm not going anywhere either. You can always reach out to me as well. Richmond Investments, this is you.
So as I mentioned earlier, this project really plays off of a lot of development that's already been happening in and around the downtown area. One is obviously the Loop. Phase two is set to begin in 2024. And then we have the Elstro Plaza, which is the most-used park in the city of Richmond. Has tons of events and activities year-round, and so this would be a great complement for residents of this new development to be able to enjoy walking right over to Elstro Plaza. And then we have the Whitewater Gorge Connector Trail that was just completed. And then the gorge activation plan. I know the county's very familiar with that plan through the health investments. And this will be a great opportunity for residents just to walk down and enjoy amenities down in the gorge in the future. So now we'll get into the project scope and the financial contributions for the project. And I'll invite Darren back up to talk about the actual scope of what to expect in this development.
As I mentioned earlier, we're looking at approximately 150 new apartment homes here. Once the architects start really getting in and dividing up the building and, you know, putting in corridors and, you know, mechanicals and service, like it might go from 148 to 150, you know. Somewhere right around 150, we're within a couple percent of that. So it'll typically be almost all one and two-bedroom. You know, it's probably 50% of the property would be a one-bedroom, and then 40% would be two-bedroom. And then maybe 5% that are studios. And another 5% that are on the opposite end of that, maybe a two-bedroom plus or even a three-bedroom unit. It depends on how it falls. But by and large, it's going to be one and two-bedroom units, which again, you know, contrast it to kind of traditional apartments where it's mostly two-bedrooms and even some three-bedrooms and four-bedrooms, light on the one-bedrooms. This is a different mix, and it's a different, just a different group that is looking at these apartments than the more traditional ones. We went through the interior and exterior amenities, and, you know, we put generally the same thing in all of our property. There's no bait and switch. We've taken Valerie and some other city officials, county officials at the time, through some of our properties and assured you, like, what you see there is what you'll get here out of bait and switch. You'll get that same high level of amenities because that's what draw people in. It's nothing in the apartment itself. They're nice, but really, it's the amenities they want because they're going to be hanging out there, and it's that community feeling. I think we just lost Wi-Fi again. We will be utilizing the existing parking garage, plus there's room on the site for some onsite surface parking. They're also for some, from onsite surface parking. There'll also be, uh, the ability to, to park on the street, because along Sixth Street, on the first floor, uh, most, there'll be the ability to access your unit from the outside. Most everyone else, almost everyone else will be accessing their units from inside, interior corridors. But on the first floor, along Sixth Street, we'll have walk-up units that look like townhomes, something you'd see in, like, Chicago or something like that. Those folks will probably want to be able to park on the street, uh, in front of the unit when they can. If they can't, there's other parking options, uh, as well.
Sorry, for the audience, the Wi-Fi keeps going out, so.
And here, in your packet, there's a rendering. Um, this was, um, this is one, one way it may look. Um, our architects kind of laid it out and, uh, had it look that way. But as we go through the, um, approval process, they'll include some planning commission, I assume. And, um, there'll be, you know, it'll be tweaked. I don't think it'll look exactly like that. But that's a starting point and certainly give you a, hopefully a frame of reference on size and, and scale. And then that's the site plan that was, uh, in here earlier. We'll run linearly down Sixth Street.
I, I will quickly point out here, the area in red, um, that is the four thousand square feet of commercial space that's currently proposed. And then the arrow, area in yellow, that's where the interior amenities will be for the most part within the property.
And that, that amenity area will have storefront, like a, a retail or any shop would, um, so that it can help activate the, the street level there.
Okay, now we'll get into the project budget. Um, as you can see here, this is a thirty-six point six million dollar estimated project currently. Um, Flaherty and Collins is committing a minimum of twenty-one point six million. And then if project costs, um, accelerate for any reason, um, they will be covering, um, the balance of any cost increase. Um, we've been working over the last two years to put together, um, as much out of state or out of, uh, county dollars to infuse into this project as possible. Um, one of those is the Ready 1.0 funds. Uh, many of you were a part of, of that process. And there is two point five million dollars that's allocated to this project specifically from our, um, state ready dollars. In addition to that, Flaherty and Collins applied for redevelopment tax credits from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. Uh, we were successful in gaining a four million dollar award from the Indiana Economic Development Corporation. But once those credits are sold, that will infuse about three point six million dollars into the project. Um, we were just at the Richmond Redevelopment Commission, uh, this afternoon, um, getting their vote of support for the, um, city's cash contribution. And that will be made up of a three point four or five million dollars in cash. In addition to that, there is a one million dollar loan from the Wayne County Foundation, who has created a new impact investing program. Um, this is the very first project that, uh, the Wayne County Foundation is investing in, uh, but they see the importance and the significance of this project and wanted to be a partner of ours. So the Redevelopment Commission is, uh, will be responsible for paying that five-year loan debt at an interest rate of five percent. In addition to that, um, we have a two point four or five million dollar project-based TIF bond. That means that bond will only be, um, used from taxes that are derived from this project solely. It will not come from the greater redevelopment area. Um, that'll be a ninety percent pledge of tax dollars for this project for the term of twenty-five years. So that will allow us to generate about three point one million dollars in bonds. But after interest and fees, that will leave two point four or five million to be infused into the project. So the reason we're for you today is to close that final gap of two million dollars in consolidated edit funds. So I passed out to each one of you a cash flow document that you also have. And this is just to demonstrate, um, how I anticipate edit funds being used and the new distribution from the state coming in in the future. So as you can see now, we have a little over a five point four million dollar cash balance. Um, we have current obligations that we've already approved, um, at one million seven hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. And we expect another five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars roughly coming in in state distributions, um, by the end of the year. Should we decide to make a two million dollar contribution to this project, um, that will leave us at the end of the year with a cash balance of two million two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, if we bring in at least the amount we brought in last year, which was roughly one point seven million, and deduct the EDC's operating budget and our 2024 contributions to the Eastern Indiana Regional Plan Commission, the SBDC, and GIS, uh, by the end of next year, we would have a cash balance of available funds of a little over three point one million dollars. So I just wanted to demonstrate to you that this is not fully depleting the consolidated edit fund should you choose to, uh, be a partner with us in this development. And I did want to backtrack just a bit to the project-based TIF bond. I did forget to mention that, um, both Wayne Bank and First Bank are partners in this project. And the two banks have decided to split the bond purchase. Um, so we're very grateful for their support and their confidence in this project. Are there any questions about the, um, financial contributions?
What's the timeline on the finances?
So essentially, the project agreement, uh, gives Flaherty and Collins, uh, until October to close. Um, that gives them a chance to design everything, secure their construction loan, et cetera. And at, at that time of closing, we would put the cash contributions, um, into a, is it, we don't know what bank yet, but essentially a trustee that would manage the funds and disperse them to Flaherty and Collins, Collins as they invest in the project. So it would be needed as a one-time investment in 2024. Okay, so we'll keep going and then come back to questions again at the end. So I did want to share that as part of our Ready Grant project, uh, we had the opportunity through the IEDC to utilize Ernst &amp; Young to complete economic impact analysis of the project. Um, this is a little bit of a different project, because the, most of the impact is short-term with the construction. So the construction is estimated to create five hundred and twenty-eight jobs over eighteen months, um, which will generate twenty-five million dollars in labor income and fifty-four million dollar total economic impact throughout the county. Uh, that nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar tax revenue is basically, um, local income tax that will be generated from the five hundred and twenty-eight construction jobs. And then we have household impact. That one's a little tougher to pin down, because, um, as Darren said, roughly a third of individuals who live in this property will be new to the area. So that will increase the, the new households that are coming here. Um, and then we don't know one person will live in a unit or three people will live in a unit. But ha- household spending is estimated to increase by six hundred thousand dollars up to one point eight million dollars per year. And that spending will generate another four to eleven incremental jobs, as well as twenty-eight potentially new restaurant So far today, we talked about the impact of this development in downtown Richmond. But I also want to bring your attention to the, the impact on our housing market that this will have. Um, we have very few apartment units on the market, or, I'm sorry, for lease in the community. Uh, our 2021 housing study indicated that we had a one point one percent vacancy rate. Um, that's essentially nothing available for rent in the market rate apartment complex segment. And so that really demonstrated to us that we need to attract developers like Flaherty and Collins to the community in order to bridge that gap. Um, additionally, the study indicated at that time in 2021 that we needed forty-five units for rent per year, um, which, which would equate up to two hundred twenty-five units over five years. But I did want to share that we just received last week a new revised housing study, um, because we knew ours was quickly becoming outdated. And we've received the request to update it from some other housing developers we're, uh, working with. And that, in, that need has increased since then. Uh, for Wayne County, over the next five years, we actually need eight hundred market rate apartment units just to meet demand today. And it's estimated that roughly five hundred and seventy-five of those units are going to be to, be needed in Richmond. Uh, the 2021 study also indicated that in order to move the needle, we needed to really first focus on housing for, uh, professional singles, couples without children, or in early stages of family formation, and empty nesters. And as you've heard today, this project very much fits that bill. And so I feel like we found a great product that will help retain and attract talent in this community. Just to kind of wrap things up, um, as I mentioned earlier, you know, there are future investments planned in and around downtown to build off what's already going on. Um, we already have property owners, um, like the Eastmans and the Weedalls, who are investing in properties in downtown. Um, Richmond's Place Program has been revitalizing, um, two buildings downtown currently. And, um, the Gorge Activation Plan, I think, will be huge for the future of downtown Richmond. Um, in addition to that, I'm really proud of the work from the Health Committee and our commitment to invest a million dollars in downtown revitalization. So I really feel like it's a good compliment that not only can we bring in potential outside investment, but we're also investing a million dollars, um, to support our existing building owners and help them reinvest and reinvigorate their, their properties. So it's not an either-or scenario. Do we, do we help local business owners? Or do we, we bring in a big new investment? We're doing both, and we can do both. And I'm excited for what the future holds downtown. Thank you.
Does anyone on Counselor Commissioners have a question for Valerie or Val?
Valerie, um, on the construction impact, uh, you said nine hundred and twenty-five thousand in tax revenue. That is county?
That would be CAGIT and EDN combined.
Okay, okay. And, and do we know how many employees? Because you, it, it's obviously goes locally to the county, um, where the workers would live. But do we know how many, how, what percentage of that would be typically Wayne County employees?
You mean, construction employees? Um, I think the intent is to use local contractors as much as possible.
Yeah, where, where you can. I mean, that's always, it's best for the community. It's best for us. It's less travel time. Um, I don't know enough about this study to know if they took a certain percentage of the employees would be local and factor that in, or if that's just a gross number. But, yeah, I said, where there's, where there's opportunity to hire local, we, it's good for us to do it as well. So, generally.
The, the, the tax re- revenue, um, that would be created would only be for if the individuals that lived in this county, though.
Yeah, that's correct.
They, they lived outside, it would be.
Right.
They lived in Henry County, the revenue would go to Henry County.
Yeah, I, I, sorry. Again, I don't, I didn't do it, say anything, but a lot of times that they also will factor in the fact that even if they come in from out of county, they're going to have lunch somewhere, or they're going to stop at the gas station here and, um, other, uh, kind of indirect and implicit, um, benefits. But again, I don't know if that's the case here or not, but it's occasionally, that's in those studies.
Thank you.
I'm curious to know what you would anticipate the monthly rent being for a one-bedroom and, of course, a two-bed, two-bath, your most common.
Sure. Um, and, and there's going to be different, even within those categories, there'll be different sizes and locations.
Sure.
But, you know, on average, um, so for the whole property, I think we're, we're hoping that, uh, you know, that it's going to be thirteen hundred a month on average. Um, uh, and if we don't hit that, that's, that's our problem, right? That, that only impacts us. Uh, the one-bedrooms are probably going to be closer to eleven hundred, um, on average. There might be some larger ones that have a den that are more. There might be some smaller ones that are less. I think we'll have studio units that are, you know, nine hundred and, and up. Uh, the two-bedrooms, uh, are, are probably going to be in that fifteen hundred range with some, um, uh, getting seventeen, eighteen hundred, the larger ones closer to the top floor. If they happen to have a den or a third bedroom, they can, they can go for a little more than that. So, um, is that helpful?
Sure, thank you.
And I'll follow up on that. So based on those rents, have you done a market rent study for this area that supports that? I know the housing study today specifically say market rent for that. I, I know a little bit about market rent, kind of an expert in this.
Yeah. Um, so we, we, we did a market, it's hard to do a market study on that in, in Richmond, uh, right? Because there's not comps. But I would say our projects in Kokomo, Elkhart, La Porte, and Lawrenceburg, which I felt like were, were most similar here. They're all, on average, uh, fourteen hundred and above on the average rent. So trying to play it a little safe and, and come in under that a bit. Uh, and again, we're projecting what it's going to be three, with the rents I gave you are what we hope we get three years from now when we open. Um, if not four years when we're stabilized. So, um, you know, those numbers might be a hundred dollars less than that today. But, you know, we're seeing rent growth in all communities, probably at least three to four percent. Some places have been higher, but I think those days are over. Um, so anyhow, you get, that's how, uh, you'd get to maybe a hundred, a hundred dollars more when we opened than what would be today.
And Val, so the study that you did on the two thousand and one, enough payment, those market rents were on Richmond market rents deficits now, correct? Correct? Did they do a market rent study in Wayne County?
So there are, yes. It, they didn't do a specific rent study. However, they did, um, take into account what some rents are. Um, they use comps from similar, similar communities in terms of what rental rates can be absorbed here and what that absorption rate will be. So there's different segments of housing within the study. And I apologize, I'm not extremely familiar with the new one at this juncture. But, um, there are different segments of different types of housing. And it shows, based on square footage, the range of rents that can accommodate, uh, can be paid for in this region. And this project very much fits in, um, with what we can accommodate.
Can you get me that study?
Absolutely. Um, we don't have the, the final version. We have a draft right now. Um, so I can get you a final version in probably two weeks.
We have had unsolicited, a couple of the larger employers in the community indicate that those rents would be no problem for their employees and that they would be certain they'd be, their employees would be taking a large chunk of, of these. So, again, for what that's worth.
And, and I see and approve all of the make-my-move applications. And within that application asks what type of housing individuals are looking for and how much they're willing to pay, whether it's for rent or to buy. And the majority of the time, the rental rate for an apartment is anywhere from a thousand to fifteen hundred a month.
Anybody else?
I guess with the price, rent's going to be, it shouldn't be a subsidized housing, but what can I guarantee we have a subsidized housing?
Sure, it's actually in the project agreement, and it will be in the bond agreements, that the project has to be market rate for twenty-five years, which is the life of the bond issue.
Is that all?
Yeah. Um, I've been asked by other people, is there any callbacks in this, that if something happens to get our money back?
Speak to that specifically in the project agreement?
I'm not saying. No, it's fair. There, there should be. There is, uh, certainly the equivalent, or what I think of, we're in that, there's a, a guarantee from us, a, an actual completion guarantee. There is also a guarantee, uh, that we will make the minimum tax payment necessary to support the bonds. Um, so there is, there, there's teeth in there that we have to deliver on completing the project and making the tax payments. And that it cannot, you know, to the point earlier, that it would not be, um, uh, any sub, any tax credit subsidized housing, or it would be market rate, which is all we do. We, we have a division that does that. It's not me. And none of our market rate properties get converted, but it's, we had no problem putting that in there.
And I have a question about parking. Hundred and fifty apartments, how many parking spots are you estimating for apartment?
So what we typically see in a project like this is about one point two to one point two-five. Um, and I'd also, that's a utilization rate. It's probably, or that's, that's, uh, how many parks, if you think about how many parking passes there would be, uh, and I, I mentioned this earlier, every parking operator I've ever known will tell you that no matter what, there's always ten percent that aren't there, right? Whether they're at work, you know, they're working a different shift, or their car's being worked on, they're on vacation, their friend's house. Um, so a property like a hundred and fifty units, we would need a, a approximately two hundred spaces. And even then, they're not going to be full, all full at the same time typically. Um, so.
How many do we have now?
So there's two hundred, or three hundred and thirty-five parking spaces in the garage. And we are dedicating one hundred spaces in the garage to this project. And then the re, the balance will be surface parking. And, um, you saw somewhat of an L shape in, in the site layout. Um, that will be surface parking. But in addition to that, there'll be some parking along Sixth Street as well.
I have a question about parking. So, because there's not a lot of parking downtown anyway, and a lot of the, um, our businesses have made comments about that, are you going to have this, um, fenced in or something to where only if you've got a card to swipe to get into the parking lot, so that somebody that wants to go to a business two blocks down? So that somebody that wants to go to a business two blocks down is not gonna come here and park because there's no parking lot down there?
Good question that we probably haven't thought of, the specifics on the parking. At first blush, I wouldn't anticipate we would have a gate or anything, we would have some sort of sticker that, uh, uh, or some sort of, uh, to recognize that you're authorized to park there, if there wasn't, you'd be at risk being towed, and we'll have appropriate signage up it. Um, I don't think we were thinking a gate would be necessary here, maybe we should rethink that, but, uh, but.
I wasn't sure what exactly, and my other question, I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway, we have a lot of homeless people that hang out in this area, so over at the parking garage, are we, and this is a question, but that belongs to the city, so are they gonna maintain and do something to try to help those people, uh, be placed somewhere else rather than hanging out? Because people that are spending that much for an apartment don't wanna get out of their car and, you know, and not feel like they're safe to come into, cross the street and come in and go. So are, have we looked at that issue?
Well, we have two to three years to figure that out, so we'll work with Ron Oler to make sure that, um, that's top on his priority list.
Public safety is the number one.
Public safety.
Public safety is number one. You know what that issue is. So follow, follow up on the parking, allocated space for visitors or?
Um, one, you don't get a lot of visitors here, but I think we'll have some, some parking in the surface. There's also, as I understand, plenty of parking in that spaces in the garage that we can have residents direct their visitors to park in as well, so, um, that would be, you know, it's, quite frankly, that's probably an issue that gets sorted out as you open and figure out where it's working, not working, and, and you, you know, the solution kinda presents itself rather than knowing kind of in advance.
All right, if that's everything, I just really wanna thank everybody for coming tonight and for being such an attentive crowd, I appreciate that. We're gonna take about a fifteen minute break and let you all mingle and ask questions of Valerie and the developer, so, uh, you can do that right now. All right, let's get on with our meeting.
Yeah, right.
If it's okay, we're gonna continue our meeting. Anybody who wants to leave is, except for council commissioners as well. I just wanna let Ron come up really quick, I asked him to stay for just a minute, and, yeah, and then you can leave and go eat dinner. I just, um, would like to talk to Ron as mayor-elect about, um, making a verbal commitment that they would continue getting their consolidated debt at.
Yes, ma'am.
To.
Yes, we do.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I continue to support the Economic Development Corporation of Wayne County and wish we could give more and do more.
Thank you.
And one of the things about.
Hope that you can. We're more than willing.
If you wanna give seventy, I mean, hey.
One of the things I got to say last week, I didn't get to stay here tonight about this development project, and I know this is kind of off subject, um, we heard a presentation last week, and two major employers were talking about how many people they have right now looking for apartments, kinda like this. And one of them said, I've got four hundred of them living in Ohio, and I thought.
Oh, wow.
They're beginning to rent in Ohio, so they're living in Ohio, and their income tax dollars is going to Ohio, so if we can at least get those fifty to move over here quickly, because there's just fifty of them that can move over pretty quickly.
Yeah.
We could capture more added tax dollars as well, because they would have a Richmond address instead of somewhere in Ohio where they're renting right now. That's how we could have more money, yes.
Yeah.
Great. Cool. What do I need from me?
We've discussed before, as, if all, if people are moving to those apartment buildings, and there's another new place, you know, south of town that's on the books, the over fifty-five community.
Yeah, they're over fifty-five.
Then it, like, think how many houses it frees up for new families to move.
But that over fifty-five is not gonna have the amenities this will have, and won't be close to the rest.
No, no, but, but it adds another, it adds another.
People moving into that are moving out of the house somewhere else.
Family homes, yes.
That makes those available because new construction right now is expensive.
Gain momentum, it's like a snow.
Yes, yes. Actually, that's what we need, yes.
Well, Ron, I just hope if this project goes, you can get downtown revitalized. I'm getting tired of seeing a Remo set there with the windows out of it, weather be.
Yes, me too.
That's, uh, that's not the way you make redevelopment, so, I hope we don't see much more of that.
After I do some other huge changes, I gotta hire a Realtor to sell some properties. I'll work with Valerie to help me get some properties back in private hands, get them occupied, yes. That's number something on the list. Couple of things first, but that's coming pretty quickly next year.
Just a couple of things on the list?
There's a couple of things before that need to be taken care of, yes.
It's exciting, and congratulations on winning the election and.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Yes.
Just what everybody told me, Ron, you asked for this.
Be careful what you wish for, buddy.
There's consequences, both good and bad.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I do have a, uh, transi- transitional office today.
Oh.
No thanks to the previous administration, just thanks to the people in the buildings, says Ron needs a space, we need to start putting some stuff there.
That's good, thank you.
In the city building?
In the city building, yes. And in case you want the old Waynet office, the Congress Person's office, Congress and Pence offices behind that, so it's that front office. I have an orange chair.
All right.
Oh.
Orange vinyl chair, Valerie saw it today, it's pretty awesome. Sorry, I'm on TV.
Thank you for being here, I appreciate it.
Valerie, did you have anything else that you needed to tell us?
I did just wanna share, I forgot to mention that the EDC board met last week, and they are in full support of this project, um, well, one no vote, but they did vote to support, um, or make a recommendation to the county to fund the two million dollars for the consolidated debt fund, so I just, just wanna share that the board is supportive of that.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Okay, next up, Mr. Plaster.
Ask Steve to go ahead and project update first. We have before you your bi-weekly report, uh, a couple items to talk about that's changed since the last one. The first item, item number three, the courthouse exterior, uh, I think the last time I reported to you that they thought that they would finish this year, uh, because of the product that they're using on some of the cracks, it doesn't do well when the temperatures dip into the thirties at night, so we're back on what the original schedule was, and that will be finished in the spring of twenty twenty-four. So, uh, I think I originally told you that amount of money, uh, that quarter ninety-two thousand dollars, probably expended that, expended this year and it probably will not be. The, the next one, uh, the annex generator, uh, notice has been sent to the contractor to schedule the reconstruction meeting as required by our contract with him, and, uh, so we're waiting on that to be scheduled. The courthouse bathrooms, that project is finished, and you can see that most of that project has been paid for, there's a few, about seven thousand dollars left, and most of that, uh, is architectural fees, the contractor has been entirely paying.
So the punch list is done and they're totally out?
Yes.
I, I took votes over to the vote, uh, registration office last Tuesday night, and no one was in the courthouse and they had the doors open, and it's beautiful, it looks similar to the ones here, it looks really nice.
Yeah, we, we tried to match the, there's a little bit variation because of the style change over a couple of years, but we tried to match that color, so.
No more swinging doors like the.
I know. We didn't quite get a silk purse out of a sow's ear, but it's, it's close.
All right, thanks.
And then, um, I did meet with contractor for, this project, we come up with, uh, three potential solutions for facing bulkhead. Um, I put him on a short, very short timeframe to come up with the proposal to us on that. Um, the proposal that commissioners are leaning towards, uh, what they favor is to beat up on the entire project, and I made that very clear to the contractors and see where we come back from. The jail window replacement, we finally got a start date on that, and they will be, uh, on-site starting that project December fifteenth. The, uh, certific court judges security, the, the new wall and door is in, as well as the, the locking system is in. The camera that IT put in for the start of the project, it just doesn't work well with wifi because of the thick walls, there's too much of a delay between what they can see from the desk to the outside. So we're, we've asked the company that put in our security system in this building and the courthouse and the sheriff's department to provide us with a cost to put a camera in that will hook up to our, our security system and recording system, and soon as we get that, the commissioners will consider that as a, as a, hard to finish that project.
Wifi seems to be a problem for us.
Yeah.
This just happened tonight, I don't know why.
It hadn't been working.
Because, remember, we put in a new, uh, router in this, in this room, but we separated this room from the other room purposely, and so I can't tell you.
Maybe it's the providing.
Can't tell you.
Possible problems.
There's some, you don't know, could be the computer.
See, and that's what I, I, they mentioned today that, um, this computer, they're gonna replace this computer because it works on Windows ten and they need something that goes up to Windows eleven, I don't know whether that's tied into it, but this is the first time we've had that problem in here, so, yeah. The, uh, expo hall HBAC, that is scheduled to start tomorrow, and all the inside work, I would anticipate being done within days because we have a, we have a space out there where we don't have any rentals, and then, as you know, the remainder of it will happen on the outside, so that can, the, the current units will still remain in place so that they're usable, that they can hang the ductwork and electrical work and then go to the outside and mount the units, so the switch over should be pretty seamless. And the, uh, main service upgrade in this building is scheduled to start, uh, the weekend of November twenty-fifth, and remember that is a complete shutdown of this building, they had to coordinate with RPNL to get that done. Power will be out for about eight or nine hours in this building, so we'll coordinate with IT department to make sure all the servers are shut down and everybody's computers, nine-one-one will still continue to operate as usual because they're on a different electrical feed, but if for some reason something does happen, uh, the backup generator will kick in, and in fact, we had an episode, uh, what, week before last, that we came into work and, and we were out of power for about two hours, uh, and so we had the generator to jail on and here and the health department. Power came back on a couple hours earlier than anticipated, but everything worked as it should have done. And then down at the lower right-hand corner is those numbers that I always keep before you. Any questions on that sheet? I do have a couple other things I'd like to throw out, talk about, if I don't have any questions on the sheet. The, uh, fleet management committee met, and as you know, uh, pre, pre, earlier in the year, uh, you had appropriation to purchase a vehicle for the health department, a truck for the health department, and it was, you approved the money out of the COVID reimbursement fund. So the truck that was worth, the dealer that was worth bid, uh, is a Dodge pickup truck, apparently that truck, Dodge has stopped production of that truck for some reason, and is no longer available, so the original cost that you folks looked at, uh, is no longer on the table, it looks like. We're trying to find one, uh, that is similar, but the discussion, I think, um, bringing to Mike Sharp, who's, who's been looking to purchase a truck elsewhere of similar value, forty-two thousand dollars that you folks appropriated out of COVID funds probably is not gonna cover it. So it would seem to me that you got, if, if in fact you would consider additional money for this truck, it could come from ARPA or come from the COVID account because there's still unappropriated money in that, or from the council one-time contingency, or, uh, one-time expenditure fund. If you took it out of COVID, you would take an additional, additional appropriation to do that, uh, not sure how you would handle the ARPA, but the money for.
It could be a transfer.
Be a transfer from the, uh, the capital equipment line, and we've transferred some, uh, out of that already, but there was two hundred, two hundred thousand in capital equipment, so I think we've transferred about fifty thousand. But as you can see, this report, I told you, you're gonna have several hundred thousand dollars in this one-time account that won't be expended this year, and, and it's already been appropriated, and I would suggest that you just simply say, uh, you would authorize up to X number of dollars to be spent from the one-time expenditures to cover any overages, and I would, and I'll rely on Barry and Max and Jeff to give you a sense of what that number should look like based upon the conversation we had earlier.
It's probably gonna be in the range of a couple thousand dollars, it could be a little more. Mike is more aware that we wanna control that, but we're kinda in a bind. By purchasing, and he's been basically looking at auctions to get a truck, and if he acquires a truck that way, he's gonna have to have the money soon, even though if he buys it for the WESL, uh, waiting two weeks or four weeks to get an appropriation is not feasible. Now, the other thing I'd ask about, we don't know, is if we funded that, for instance, out of the one-time money, could we later appropriate on COVID? But it's a, the health department's in a bind, they've got new employees, it's gonna start soon after the first of April, based, first of January, based upon the new state money, um, they're relying on having, uh, these vehicles for that purpose.
I think in, in the fleet meeting and anyone who's been shopping and pricing trucks, we all know what we're looking at, and they're trying to buy it, working with the dealer through an auction, so in conversations with Mike, we were at forty-two thousand appropriated, um, I asked him if, uh, council approved up to ten thousand out of our one-time, if he would try not to spend the entire ten thousand, that he'd be a good steward, give him money to be able to work with an auction, to be able to make that purchase. He, he gave us his, his word that if we did approve that, that he would do everything he could to not spend that money just because he had it.
And that's the recommendation from the commission, yes. Ten thousand dollars.
Up to ten.
Up to ten, correct. And then that in conjunction with, uh, forty-two thousand that's already available.
Can I ask, what are they, what are they going to use the truck for in particular?
They got a trailer. It needs to pull trailers, um, and this is the vehicle that they'll use for, uh, septic inspections.
Oh, so it's the environmental side that needs it, okay.
And they need to go out into the field and, uh, actually, new construction.
She's currently using another vehicle that will, the new.
That makes sense, okay, thank you.
So I would move the, the ten thousand to the hour of the, uh, of this, yeah.
And where's it going?
I think we could just write two claims, just one claim out of the COVID money, one claim out of the one-time money, to cover the cost.
Okay, okay.
But you don't have to transfer.
Just spend it directly out, okay, that sounds like, that's.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Max, second by Barry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
I have a, a quick question, when you're saying COVID money, are you talking about the COVID vaccine insurance reimbursement?
Yes.
Yes.
Fun, okay, thank you.
And that's what we've purchased their, uh, current new purchased vehicles for the last year, so, and that's worth forty-two thousand.
Hey, my other question, and just, just for a conversation, if we're coming up with a meeting here, what's council's pleasure with your conference? Remember last year, we had a little bit of.
Snappy.
Snap, we would, I, I think, middle of November, maybe, at least clarify for me what council's preference is, um, and then the second part of that question, uh, historically, council has, uh, in December, is not entertaining transfers, other, rather than you had a member of council, I think, work with the auditor to do a year-end transfers to, to clean up banking balances, and, uh, how do you wanna handle that and the timeframe that you think that would be, to quit coming to council asking for transfers and just simply defer them till that cleanup period?
Yeah, the cleanup time. Tony, since you are Mr. Budget, would you like oversee that? You would like. Tony, since you are Mr. Budget, would you like oversee that? You would like to oversee.
Makes a lot.
The year end transfers.
Difference to me, whether you or you, whether me or you as liaison, either one would be.
And do you want to, if you do that, if we do that, you know, if we start running in the red by December first, do you want to just wait until the cleanup period? You still want to entertain transfers?
I think we should just wait and just do it one time. It'd be easier. Debbie's going to be out on sick leave, so.
Amy does that stuff.
Amy does it, okay, okay. Yeah, and we we typically have a list of everything.
Mark would prefer doing the encumbrances.
We need to do encumbrances. They just have to be, when we vote on them this year in January, they have to be done, so.
So timing wise, you know, when when was will council want to hear about workshop in December?
That's what I think.
When's the last date of pay?
They're going to.
Twenty seven of December.
They're cutting off claims to twenty.
Later, so.
Which will add about ten days to what we normally do, and for some of the smaller departments, that may not be the issue. But a lot of my utilities fall within the middle of the month, so some of the money that you would normally have to transfer may not be there because we've already spent.
There should be less of those year end cleanup transfer things, so.
So the middle of.
If we spend it, it'd be more. There'd be more because if we spent the money in January to pay for last December, then it won't be there to pay for this December.
Like my utilities.
Yeah.
If I, when I pay them here in December, I'll have thirteen months of utilities on this budget, which is tight.
Get it all figured out. We'll get, I mean, you say Amy does the year end transfers?
Amy's doing all the corrections and the transfers and that.
So we can work with her on on.
And and I know that that Mark is really wanting encumbrances done fairly soon.
So we'll need to, if if any encumbrances need to be made, we'll need to be aware of those the first of December, and so we can probably vote on them at workshop.
Okay.
And I think I think what Mark told me earlier was if you think you might need to encumber it, go ahead and do it. And then at the last minute, if we don't need it, he'd rather throw the form away, but go ahead and do it and then change.
Because those encumbrances have to be entered into the system in January, once we voted on them in December. So, okay. And between Tony and I, we can, I think it's always good to have more eyes on things like that. We can both take a look at everything Amy comes up with.
And all transfers will then come before the council's first of January.
Yeah, yeah.
Meeting for approval.
But do you want us to get information out then to department heads and elected officials that if they have encumbrance requests, they should get it to to council at their January, at the December meeting?
About the December meeting.
It's December sixth.
Yeah.
Is it the sixth? Yeah, so they've got time to get it to us before December sixth.
With also the requirements for something to be encumbered, not contract, yes.
Yeah.
Not we wish we would have done this earlier.
Yeah.
And we haven't done it, but encumber it, you know.
Has to be.
Something on your contract by the end of the year.
And you you guys created a new form for that.
Yes, and we are just about ready also to send out an email to all the department heads, bookkeepers, y'all, explaining that about the encumbrance form on the internet and that, you know, he's wanting to get to to do it. So we're working on that letter.
Okay, the sooner we get that out, the better, so that they can have it, have them, they need to get those in before our December sixth meeting so that we'll know what they are. Okay.
So about the question, I don't know where Mark disappeared to, but since he's not here, I will ask it. So when we were talking about the fifty five thousand that we put in the budget for the surveyor for his his to go in his ditch fund, my my question is, shouldn't we or should we in January move that into his fund? Because at the end of the year, if he hasn't used it all, it would be swept out if we left it in the council budget. Shouldn't we maybe transfer that one into his fund rather than, we're just going to pay whatever he's. He said that was a one time thing, so we put in our one time money, so we'll just pay it when it. Well, it's one time thing to do the ditch, but how how often he might pay on whatever that is, that's the part I don't know. Because he was looking for it to be transferred into his fund, and I said, let me know what's on that.
Ask at budget time when he was here. He just said he needed fifty five thousand.
Well, he thought that was part of the budget process, I believe. He didn't realize that was for fund rather than his budget. But anyway, Mark was going to ask you about that, so I just thought I would mention it and and just see.
But I'm not, I'm not understanding. You're acting like it's an ongoing expense. He told us it was a one.
No, just as if he hasn't spent all of that by the end of the year, if he's still working on it, if it's in the general fund, it would be swept back into start all over. Where if you put the fifty five thousand in his fund line, it'll stay there if he hasn't spent it all and he still needs it. That's all I was saying.
I I might have to ask him about that.
Yeah, we got time to.
Yeah.
We don't have to do anything till up in the year we have left.
And you'll have money in your budget in twenty twenty four, so.
One time money, so.
Let him spend it out of out of your budget in twenty twenty four.
That's what I was thinking.
That's what we're talking, twenty two, I think.
Yeah.
And that's what.
If it gets transferred in there now, it's going to just come back, so.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay. Steve, do you have anything else?
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you ready for me?
We are ready.
Let's start off with some good news. So we have, we've been working with Dunn on the on the health insurance program. You know, we've had a good year for the last two, even three years in terms of claims. This year for twenty twenty four, the rates did not go up at all. So consequently, we have been growing reserves in the health insurance. Plus, it's gotten to the point now where we have four point two million dollars in reserves. That is is being invested for us by Dunn. Proceeds from those investments go back into that fund. As commissioners have discussed, I think four point two million is more than than you need in reserves. Remember, there are kind of three components to to building the health insurance program. One is what the employer puts in. Historically, the last several years, that has been about four million dollars. The second is what the employees who participate in the program. That is between eight and nine hundred thousand dollars a year, so just under five million dollars from those sources. And then the third is the reserves, which can be spent on on claims for health insurance programs. And that now has grown to four million dollars. A hundred percent funding for our health insurance program is roughly six and a half million dollars. And we are at about nine million dollars now. So the suggestion with commissioners' concurrence is that we do a a series of premium holidays for both county as the employer and employees who participate in the program. The reason we bring it to you tonight, with like all the the numbers fleshed out, we might like to see. We're working on getting the exact numbers. Like to do that for December payroll. December is a is a three pay month for employees, so they would have zero deductions in the month of December. And for the employee of us, the county, it's three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars a month that goes into the health insurance program, just just north of four million dollars a year. So our recommendation is that we do a holiday for health insurance for December of this year. That will cost the fund roughly four hundred thousand dollars. When I say cost, it won't go into reserves. It will stay in the general fund. It will stay in employees' pockets. And and then we'll take a month off. We'll look and see how things go. We'll look and keep an eye on claims. And then we'll make a decision whether February or March would be a good time for another another holiday. What we're thinking, what we've discussed just generally is three million dollars as a good target for reserves. We don't want to get so low that that we have to put more money back in. Also don't want to keep more money than than we need to in that health insurance fund. So we'll analyze and share our recommendation of when the next holiday might be. If in fact, things continue to go smoothly and and we continue to have a good reserve in that. So we'll bring that to you as a suggestion. I think probably it doesn't, it doesn't require approval, but I always like to discuss financial issues with you guys. You're the you're the fiscal body. I want you to know that if we do this, then you'll have three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars additional in the general fund from the health insurance line to the general fund for for next year. And each month that we would do that, we'd have another roughly three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars that would be uncommitted after being in the general fund budget. So we already have just just a hair less than four million dollars this year. Not even too far in the weeds. We opted over the summer to take some money out of that line item, transfer it to the commissioner's budget to pay for those telemedicine programs and apply them to every employee, including part time employees. And that cannot be paid for out of the health insurance fund because it's it's going to support nonparticipants in the health insurance program of all counties. So we moved that into another general fund line. I think it's not money that's programmed to go into the health insurance fund at all, but it's only twenty five thousand dollars a year, so it doesn't really impact the numbers dramatically anyway. So be happy to answer any questions that I can about that. And then we'll want to, commissioners will want to take a vote, and I'm happy for you to take a vote to endorse that idea if you're if you're supportive.
I would just like to add, we are grateful to our employees for their wellness and and also for their decision to use generic prescriptions. That has truly contributed to our savings.
Like the idea, the concept, I I would like to see documentation of all the different ways to determine how, what kind of balance we should have. So we'll have a better understanding, but also I would like to see that you set a deep cap and a low amount. That when it gets, you know, gets above a certain amount, you take a holiday. It gets below a certain, you know, we don't. It kind of becomes an automatic thing.
And and we will do that. The timing is such that if we want to get this out in December, we need to take action now. And it'd just be one one month for now.
Longer.
Come back to you with another recommendation. It has all that documented, not in touch.
And they have a checking part of of our account that they need to keep a certain balance in to be able to pay claims quickly out of. So you can let us know what that threshold is that they like to keep.
Right now, they have about a million dollars in what I'll call the checking account.
Yeah.
And about three point two million in mostly certificates of deposit that are earning just five percent. Those are all laddered, so there are there are some that are close to maturity that were invested in one to two years ago that are significantly lower level. Banks have been doing the C D rigs that have really shot up in the last eighteen months. So some of them are are in the one percentage range. We're working with Dunn to look at those CDs and analyze that with their their bank to make a recommendation on whether it would be beneficial for us to take a penalty and withdraw that money and reinvest it in a higher rate CD. But we're we're looking at all of that. Dunn has has been, has done a great job of managing those funds. We're real happy with how that's going. But we'd like to proceed with this idea for December. That again, the total cost would be about four hundred thousand dollars.
Jeff, I have I have a question, sorry. And and maybe you said this night and I catch that question.
Could be because I speak softly.
Yes, so if we if we give the employees a vacation, we'll save from paying their health insurance. Have you checked with the auditor's office to see how easy or hard that would be for our payroll clerk to 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 manage that? I don't think would be a big deal, but I don't know.
Easier than calculating how much has to be deducted for their insurance.
They just make it zero and don't take it for a couple of times, okay, three times.
And we've done this in the past.
Yeah. We have.
Any other questions? I think it's a great idea, really.
Motion that we do that.
Second.
Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion among commissioners? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At the same sign, the motion carries.
Would you like a motion of support from council?
Love that if you're willing.
I know, I was getting ready to be that excited.
Most of us worked that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. If you post, there's nothing.
If we had a time machine, we could have, you know.
He got, he's so excited. He got so excited.
So will you communicate this to all of the employees so they're aware of what you know?
It's on TV.
Probably.
Yep, they probably don't watch TV.
It's already linked.
I'm sure they're all watching.
Yes, we will. We will.
Because that's a nice gesture.
Absolutely.
Yeah, there you go.
So Bobby, Mark's going to get the minutes from you because he's likely to even quite hear what all Jeff was saying, but to make sure their office has everything squared away for whatever we're doing in December, right? It's in December.
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 December of twenty twenty three.
There you go. Thank you. Okay, next.
We have a couple of of issues and and consult with you on your preference on how we pay for these expenses. The first one is an autopsy, and this is not through the coroner's office. Bobby, were you able to find that?
It's that yellow sticky.
It's the yellow sticky note, thank you. I was looking for a whole sheet. There's an autopsy of a a person who was convicted of a crime in Wayne County, sent to prison, out of the county, obviously, and and died in prison. And apparently, we're finding there is a statute that then sends the expense for the autopsy back to the county that convicted that person and sent them to prison. And this is in the amount of five thousand two hundred and thirty four dollars.
For the autopsy?
The prison.
Or corrections?
Yes, it's a it's a state law. We have, we have the, we have the documents somewhere. I don't have it, unfortunately. Five thousand two hundred and thirty four dollars. We don't have an autopsy line item in the commissioner's budget. There are a number of places.
We do in the corners, like, but we can't use that, right?
Well, I guess you could try and think. I think we could.
If there's a balance in there.
If it has a balance.
I think we could.
Use the budget.
But again, yeah. Again, yeah, he usually comes back at the end of the year and has to have an additional transfer. And and it's kind of six of one, half a dozen of the other. If it's in the general fund, it doesn't really matter. There are a number of places that we can take this, and the next one is another vehicle. You know, we have in the in the perf fund, we have a balance for this year. We probably won't for next year because raises were significant, as you well know. And we did not increase the the perf line item in the commissioner's budget. But this year, we have currently a balance of about four hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. That was the number from about a week ago. But this five thousand two hundred and thirty-four dollars could be transferred. From that line item to anywhere you want it. It can be paid out of the one-time money, which clearly there's additional money. There also is a sheriff's department vehicle that handles this all. Okay.
Yeah, let's go ahead and and just, if everybody's okay, I'll entertain a motion to pay the autopsy bill from our one-time funds. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Thank you.
There you go.
Um, the other is a sheriff's department vehicle. Replacement cost is forty-three thousand forty dollars. This is a vehicle that was replacing one that was totaled. I think it was this year. Could have been last year. There is a a insurance benefit of, I think, about twelve thousand dollars, if I recall correctly. That goes into the general fund. So the forty-three thousand forty dollars, this vehicle is eligible for them to pick up. As soon as we have the check, forty-three thousand forty dollars. And again, the easiest way, it looks like, is out of your one-time funds. Or it could be paid out of ARPA. You would want, it's it's up to you. The the benefit, I would say, potentially of considering paying that out of ARPA instead of general fund. Is that those are dollars that have a time limit, you know, the clock is ticking, we have to spend that money. The general fund is not having to be spent by any time certain. It stays in the general fund until you all decide to go and spend it. So again, we we have further discussions on how to spend ARPA dollars. My opinion is moving in the direction of whenever we have an expenditure that that. Is a legal expense that that the ARPA funds that are classified as. As lost revenue funds can be spent on anything that we can be able to spend on. If we pay those out of ARPA, we take the clock off of the general fund dollars. And and at any point, if we can make a decision to spend those. Some one-time expenditures that might qualify for, might be considering for ARPA right now. So again, it's a philosophical issue, and we haven't really discussed that yet. So for tonight, those are the, those are the options.
I would rather see it out of ARPA. Truly, this isn't a one-time expenditure, one-time expenditures to me are one-time.
No, but this was appropriated for already for in in your twenty twenty-three budget. Line item for capital equipment. So you had a line item for sheriff's vehicles, it's two hundred and fifty thousand, we've already spent that. This was capital equipment. I don't recall that you had any specific equipment item. In mind when you when you budgeted that and appropriated it. So it's it's available already in the twenty twenty-three budget.
I think a totally motion to take it out of our money.
Is that a motion?
It was. It is now.
It is now. We have any other questions? Do you have a motion and a second to take the funds from the ARPA money? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none.
Okay, one other item.
Fill out the appropriate.
We will do, well, Bobby will. Right, Bobby? She has strict instructions not to put it on my desk. The fuel tanks at the highway. This has been another item for discussion, we've gone out to bid. We we approved last week to expend up to five hundred thousand dollars. On on replacement of the fuel tanks. A few additional expenses that Mike originally asked for. That have to do with repaving parts in the parking lot and doing a couple of other things. Aren't necessarily directly related to the fuel tanks. So our our approval was for up to five hundred thousand dollars. We have discussed that that would come out of ARPA. If you recall the list, tentative we put together. It's at the top of that list. And again, we do have, we do have bids. We accepted one of those bids, subject to. Having funds available and appropriated. He's ready to move forward. Ron is tweaking the the contract a little bit to make sure. Includes language that it's subject to appropriation. So as soon as as that's tweaked, we'll be ready to sign it and we'll come to you for it. Where would you like to to spend that out of? If it's ARPA, there is not a five hundred thousand dollar appropriation. If you remember, we have not appropriated anything for twenty twenty-four out of ARPA. So we'll need to put together a list of of all of the things, and we've gotten started working on that. That will include all the things in the health program that we have agreed to fund. And things like this fuel tank. And we'll have to continue to discuss. How to allocate the rest of the of the funding for, so so that in January, we can appropriate. A list of those ARPA commitments for twenty twenty-four. So be happy to answer any questions that I can and see where where you wanna go from here with those.
I, we had discussion with Mike during budget, and I think we had consensus at that point that that was a one-time. It needed to be done, those underground things.
Time every thirty years or so.
I'm okay with those one-time.
Is that okay? As opposed to once every three years for a car?
Or once every six months.
We we did have that discussion, and we we said, why don't we go ahead and do this in twenty twenty-three? Instead of wait to twenty twenty-four, so.
Which is fine, but but there's no additional money appropriated that I'm aware of.
We have time to do an additional appropriation by work.
Are you gonna have an invoice to have to pay in twenty twenty-three? It could be every time.
Yeah, can we?
You you said blacktopping?
Just encumbrance or something?
Fuel tanks.
For the disruption in the parking.
No, fuel tanks, Gary.
Be next year, right?
We took that, we took that part out of it, and the fuel tanks is the primary thing. And the additional stuff Mike would pay for out of his budget, including blacktopping his own parking lot.
Well, I would say they're not gonna do that here this year anyway, so we don't worry about that.
But we can advertise an additional appropriation for workshop and be okay with this, right? The timing? I mean, there's plenty of advertising.
For December workshop?
Yes. But I mean, that is the timing okay for you?
No, I think, I think that should be fine.
That's the time, right?
We don't have start date. He thought that it could be done yet this year if we had money. But actually, no, I'm gonna take that back. He's talking about spring. So it it wouldn't have to be appropriated.
Oh, so we can add it to the list of appropriations.
I thought it was spring.
It was, it was gonna be real close, and he said, let's, let's do it.
So you can add, you can have it on that list for appropriations for next year.
Correct.
So we don't.
Correct, as long as you're all in agreement that that's where the money should come from.
I think we already said that earlier.
Yeah, we've talked about it and a lot of times.
Fortunately, the low bid came in slightly under five hundred thousand.
Okay.
I have something, Jeff. DOC problem. We have a contacted by the sheriff, we have a inmate that saw on the capital murder case. Tell a safe keeper at DOC. And we got a bill for four thousand three hundred and five dollars, and he has eighty-six dollars and twenty-two cents in that line item.
And this is for three months, is it not?
Uh, I think it's just for the month.
It's for three.
Is it for three? Did we get the, Bobby, did he send that to you?
Yes.
Yeah, in fact.
I I looked at it. It's it's a thousand thirty-five a month. I don't know, something like that.
What was the total, three thousand?
Four thousand three hundred and five dollars.
It must have been thirteen hundred.
It's like thirteen hundred.
Is there, is there open positions in the jail salary because of transfer?
Yeah, we can do a transfer.
Come to us next month with a transfer. I think he was asking if we could do it tonight so he can get a pay.
Well, we need to know.
And still spend it, right?
Uh, if if you give him the authority to spend that line item in the red.
Just, they can spend it until he tells us where to, which line item to take it from out of his budget, so.
Can you, can you approve him spending that into the red until, until you can transfer?
I don't even know what line item he's paying that out of.
He didn't say, he didn't tell me.
Is there, was there a claim or just a bid?
No. Oh, wait. There is a claim, could I? Yeah, I've asked.
Brad, this is, Brad, this is gonna be an ongoing.
I think so.
Yeah.
Over a thousand dollars every month.
Yeah.
So you're saying?
For until the trials.
So we'll want to deal with this. Yeah, we're gonna have to figure out something.
Yeah, I think we have a plan. A a line item for all of next year.
Yeah, I I kind of discussed it with Ron a little bit. If we could add a line item where we have. The other two we created in this case, then we can fund it. This is one oh eight five a month. Thirty-two twenty says.
Yeah, this was, I just said, hey, gotta send me the taxes.
Well, you know what? It will be if we add December, because this is only. September, October, November.
And that's the line item.
And thirty-three two eighty, so we can transfer into thirty-three two eighty in the sheriff's budget. But but we'll have to find out.
So let's do, if we can do four months so that it takes it through the end of the year.
But we don't know where to take it from. Can we just say from a, we can vote on it?
From a vacant.
From a vacant position and Kim can tell us, he can tell us which one. So the total is, I guess I wrote it down, four thousand thirty-five dollars.
Four thousand three hundred and five, yeah.
Oh, I wrote it wrong. Okay.
So you make a motion?
I I would make the motion if we transfer from an open position to that line item for that amount.
Thirty-three two eighty.
Second, can you give me the position they're gonna take it from?
They'll have to tell you what that is, we don't know.
And is that from the jail versus?
No.
Yes, it'll be from sheriff, it'll be from an open spot in the jail.
Yeah.
Well.
But he'll have to test, they'll have to tell us.
I think most of them are in the jail.
Yeah. I don't know. Not necessarily. We'll let him tell us.
Probably. Would it be an inmate care? It'd probably come from the jail. I would think, probably do.
Probably.
So the jail.
And where are we transferring it to? I'm just trying to make notes.
Thirty-three two eighty in the jail budget.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So that should be covered through the end of the year, and then we need to create a line item.
For next year, for the twenty twenty-four budget.
Yeah, can you put that on the agenda for our next meeting?
Are you gonna create a budget or can you just put more money into thirty-three two eighty?
We could, but we could add it to our, we wanna track it, we could add it to our other.
Yeah.
Where we're gonna cover. We choose to do that.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so while you have, I'll write it down, the budget is for the best. We do.
You do.
We do, I thought that was on here.
We already approved that.
Okay. We just need to approve the council commissioner minutes from October eighteenth.
Move for approval.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Move for approval.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign, motion carries.
Another piece of business, I move for approval of a nine-day variance in the twenty twenty-three vacation policy to accommodate one employee's special circumstance.
This is a commissioner's.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the same sign, motion carries.
I was under the impression that someone was gonna be here to talk about this because. We've never seen it before. You guys have approved it? The request for additional appropriation, but that hasn't been advertised for tonight, has it? Do we have anything advertised for tonight? No, okay. Because it says it's an additional appropriation, it's not tax money. Taxpayers money.
This is Sarah Grant.
Oh, it's a grant? Yes.
Tell you what, if if you're willing to approve the appropriation of of the Sarah Grant with those line items. We'll check with Ron, and if we need to, if we need to advertise it.
And do it again?
Next month.
Because they're wanting to, these both say they're additional appropriations for the grant.
I think that's.
contractual, travel and lodging, communications, equipment maintenance, and then also. The public education training, emergency response equipment, policy equipment.
Those are not additional.
Yeah, that's what, if that's what they asked.
It's a flaw in the form that has to be filled out.
Okay, gotcha. So we just need to approve this. These are, this is basically the budget for the grant money.
It's not general fund.
No, that's why I said.
Correct, but I'm I'm not sure what your point is.
I thought someone was indicating that maybe it was an additional appropriation out of general fund.
No.
With it being a Sarah.
It's out of the Sarah grant.
Right.
So we just need to approve, this is basically the budget for the Sarah grant, right? And they just need it appropriated, so we can just vote to do that. And the, commissioners?
Don't think it requires advertisement, but if it does.
I don't think it does.
We'll come back to it next month and get it advertised.
And the commissioners have already approved it.
Correct.
So if we can have a motion to approve this, this is for EMA. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There are none. All right. I think that's everything. I will tell you, I would like to put on our agenda for December sixth that we take a vote on what we heard tonight. The two million dollars they're asking for us to commit from consolidated edit. And Valerie's board has, as she stated, to tell us, their board has approved it. I think everybody, we're the last people in redevelopment approved it today, and they'll be. Voting on the money part in December also, so if that's okay with you. And then if anybody has any questions beforehand, be sure to reach out to Valerie or Ron or Jeff or. I am, well, trying to answer any questions you might have before we take that vote.
Don't have to. What Beth and I spoke about briefly was, if you recall, there there's no budget approved for consolidated edit. So yes, Val, just to put together a list of line items that would be necessary to be appropriated. First meeting in January, which would include if you approve the two million dollars for this project.
We have, we have to appropriate their whole budget, it wasn't correctly advertised, so. We're doing that in January anyway, so she can add this to the list, but. But we'll take a vote on our decision on December sixth, okay? And with that, that is the last thing that I have.
Move for approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
Thank you.